Get into spring, take care of the mud and all that good stuff. Next year, how much do you have estimated on hand? And then that will tell us how much we really have, what you got going on throughout the year.
Yeah, that's gonna help with that.
Yes, so there's, but we need to know that. We have to know that because, let's say, we did a lot of fair job of keeping the budget down last year. Um, but when you throw another worth of twenty thousand dollars that we didn't count for anywhere else, start throwing another six thousand dollars on top of that, it's only a million dollar budget.
I know. I could be.
Sorry, man, I just thought. Alright, uh.
Every dollar counts.
How about the eighteen grand you wasted on getting it cleaned up the first time?
I didn't vote on that.
You did.
Town did.
Town did.
It could've been twenty-five.
Alright.
Move around a little.
Transfer station. Uh, forty such a low, that should be telephone. Why is that, is that the addition of the?
The iPad.
The iPad.
Which actually the iPad was totally paid for itself, self-funded.
Yep, we can't count on revenue, so we.
Nope, but I'm just saying.
Overall, they're at thirty-six percent, so probably pretty good there. Do they have any other dues or subscriptions that are required to pay? If it's a copy of Transfer Station weekly, then that we might forego.
We need, at some point, I don't know how often we can go back, but I need another tank for up there for the, um, like scrap metal, but we'll move one of my old tanks into scrap metal and put a new tank somewhere else.
All our jobs and stuff like that.
We've always been able to get them going before through N R A, so we'll try that again.
Process, that's what we need. Alright.
Because my, my scrap metal tank is, it should be left up there the next time it goes. It is in horrible shape and there's nothing to weld to it. It's, it's just, it's all, it's the oldest tank we have.
Okay.
That's, that's bad.
Um, and.
This is great.
Beautiful, beautiful lot in there.
American, American.
There's solid waste recycling, uh. It's all pretty well low except for paper. That's where we flushed it fifty dollars and we spent four hundred ninety-six.
That's because we used to get paid for paper and it was costing us to get rid of it.
So, uh, okay, well, we, and I'm gonna, but we don't have to tip it. True, um, yeah, and this might be a good point, Tim, you wanna talk a little bit about?
I thought it was excellent.
I thought it was good.
And today we got seven hundred and thirty-six dollars for a tub of cans.
Cans.
That's a big item, isn't it? A little bit of cans, yeah.
Um, yeah, there was a meeting, a kickoff meeting held last week, last Wednesday, for our group to look at Transfer Station, uh, finances, practices, operations, things like that. Uh, Tim was there, I was barely there, and we had a few people from the A B C that volunteered to be on that group too. Hello.
Jose.
Mark, were you, yeah, you were there, yeah. So, if you have any questions about how that went, uh, feel free to ask any of those guys. I thought it went very, very well, I think there's an interest in seeing if they can find some ways to save money either and, uh.
Management process.
Yeah, processes and I, I think Jody was a real source, good source of information. She came with everything she really needed, very prepared to, uh, to give us. There was, I don't think there were many questions that were asked of her that she wasn't able to look up right on the spot.
I'm thinking the best, the way we can do any better than what we're doing, what they're already at this point.
I don't remember anybody asking him, hope we could do better.
Seeing so, it gets up to my lap, that's where I go.
No, you can forget about that for a while.
Yeah, but there's some other things that we can, you can do to encourage that, uh, without, uh.
Oh, by the way, that was one of the goals of the meeting, um, what do they call that? P R.
Yes.
Education, I think it was.
They kept calling her, yeah, P R, but I found education better.
I, I thought we've been recycling for years.
We have been, but it's not mandatory.
But it's not. I've always recycled.
But that's what, good for you.
Everybody's in control.
Yeah, so.
Right, because some people choose not to. And mandatory recycling involves some method of enforcement, which means somebody's gonna be up there cutting into pieces of garbage and taking a look at it. Personally, I have a little issue with that.
And have we enforced?
Right, and what's the cost of enforcement and what's the cost of?
You just shoot it, they give you the help.
Alright, better. I will, I will also say the mandatory recycling laws have been challenged in many areas around the country. Go ahead.
Uh, well, part of Ann's thing would be, uh, the education is that, you know, there are new people since we started and recycling has changed, I mean, now we're paying to get rid of paper before we were selling it, before we were selling the glass. And it's a matter of finding out, educating some of the newer people, uh, like, uh, about co-mingling different items and just taking the lid off your bottles now, off your plastic bottle, you're not supposed to do that. And so.
You're not supposed to do that?
You're supposed to take them off.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, you're supposed to take them off. Well, I, we didn't know that.
I'm pushing that?
Oh, really? I've always taken my lid.
If you don't never want to recall.
No, just letting people know these things, so.
Another issue is, is if you have mandatory recycling, it also becomes a law enforcement issue because anybody who hunts around here is walking around couches and televisions and garbage and things. Uh, when the, the wonderful living folks, uh, on Gilson Line Road first acquired the property, one of the first things they had to do was clean up a bunch of garbage that they were too lazy to truck down to us. Certainly, if you put a dollar on that, uh, people, unless you care for this room, will bury themselves all over the blades of hide in places they're around.
Well, Paul Valley Road.
Well, one of the things in that committee they were gonna get volunteers to actually mingle with the, um, citizens as they came to the dump and explain to them what the process was and how it was, that's the way. So, and there's a lot of people who really don't know, and it's attached to even in this group tonight, so that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and part of that education is, is, uh, you don't like your high taxes, here's a way you can lower it. Um, by recycling smartly, uh, there will be ways that you can reduce the cost of the town. And that's, that impacts all of us.
Is it, is it still just one and two plastic? Cause I know some places they do all the plastic, but.
Well, no, that's true, and that's one of the things that they mentioned is on their list of, of, of how they're gonna educate the people. And I would tell you what the answer is, but I don't know.
Yeah, it was something about co-mingling and separating.
You get a better price for one and two than you do with the co-mingle. So, that's all on the table, it's all gonna be discussed, it's all.
Cause that's all I do is the one and twos, and I know other people put in the others into it beside.
You can.
But, because, but I was told early on years ago, no, no, only one and two.
That's because you get a better price for one and two.
Yes.
And once you co-mingle, you get a much more.
Ann, this, this group is gonna be working on this for the next ninety days or so. So, if anybody's interested in taking part in that, um, please feel free to, to get in touch with.
I have three questions for Kevin when you're done.
Go ahead.
I am done, three questions. Um, you know, after they got done with the logging in there, they broke the cove's going out.
They, uh, the trucks, the trucks going out.
Yeah, you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure you are, that could be a big deal there.
Oh, actually, one of the fights at the town garage is.
For that, for that. Second thing, um, there's a dead limb up in, it's not really in the cemetery, it's on, it's on that butternut tree that's on the, on the wall, it's a huge dead limb, and all you gotta do is wiggle it and it'll come down.
Where abouts?
Uh, center, yeah, it's, it's right across from the log cabin. I haven't seen it, I just wiggle it, I'm trying to pull down the fence. Um, and it's big, I mean, it's a long, big room. Have you ever thought about putting in a guardrail on, uh, uh, Navy Skates, yeah. No, uh, Carman Road and there, we're at the intersection there, where that real steep terrain goes up. You're talking about putting a guardrail in there?
Yeah, and there's, there's a whole bunch of them places all over town.
Well, that's the only one I'm familiar with.
Drive up to Whole Valley Road.
I'll take you for a drive.
The answer was in the whole area, you're driving down here to the road.
That's true, I didn't ask that, I asked if they have a dollar.
Yes, we have, there's several places we would like to put a guardrail, it is all about.
You got a price for a foot or something?
I can, just takes home call, I can do a rate fitting for C W S or whatever.
That'd be good if we could get a, I'm spending it, but you have an idea of how much that costs per foot.
I don't know what the installation costs would be, but maybe we oughta do some of the worst ones. And that definitely is one of the worst. I see, I see more than a half a dozen cars in that group. That's my theory.
We thought of the economic impact on commissions. If we fix it.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of tree work around the green here, it's gonna get done at some point too.
Alright. Did we do anything to that?
Yeah, but you have to talk, I mean, I could hire that out, man.
I think that beautiful strip with the pole saw.
Oh, that, that smaller stuff. This is what I'm just telling you, if you gotta weed.
I agree. We're gonna weed it. We're gonna table the brag lane.
You don't have to, you know why? Because once you ask me a question, I'm gonna be able to answer it for you.
His concern is, uh, we need L G S for it.
Okay, I can explain that whole thing.
Okay.
I can make so much sense, do what I can. Is it not a property, is it? The topography, I don't know who ordered it.
Who ordered it?
Landlord?
Money board?
Yes.
Probably started it.
We don't need it. What they're, what they're doing is, how everyone wants, you know, what was it? Three thousand dollars, they are going to tow, put, so, top, topography, uh, topography on two acres of open field and two acres of woodland, so they'll have four acres.
That would be certain.
That will be, will squiggle line out in them, that's the topography, so why they want that, I do not know.
Obviously, what's the level?
Say again?
Obviously, what's the level?
Equipping for site development.
And how much is it gonna cost?
Three thousand dollars. For four acres.
Yeah, that's what that is. Look down, they hide them in.
It's good reading, cause do you want to keep yours or you?
I said I don't want questions when I get them. You're out of my experience. Up there. So, we got more to go. Alright, anything else for Dave?
Coming up here.
Thank you for coming.
Well, I have, you just, did you answer, are you, are you gonna spend that money on the planning? Or do you just?
No, no.
Oh, you're taking, not a table?
No.
I said no.
It was never going up. Are you talking about the survey?
Yeah, the right length.
I'm not taking any action tonight, I wanna find out more from the planning, if they were the ones who generated this, exactly why.
I think so.
Why, did you want it?
No, I was just trying to keep up with you guys.
Well, it's, it's a different, but it can do it.
Alright, uh. Cross that off. Uh, I think we're up to a point where we can plan. Planned and put together some stuff.
Thank you, David.
Regarding the sale of some land on Gilson Mine Road. And you had proposed some changes, I believe.
Yeah, Jake, I'll, I'll just do some wording, little bit of wording changes, make it a little more appealing. Just since to, time-wise, with team marketing, there's a hundred and team, yeah, that's, that's entertainment. And then my typo that you caught.
That wasn't a typo. That wasn't an omission. And I will move that we, uh, accept the changes as we saw through email to the advertisement that we might as well together. Very sad. All fair?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a sign, you said, I'm not gonna.
Yep, I got the sign, but right now, I'll put them out, um, so I'm gonna post that tonight. So, on, you guys will get it, and, uh, I think you have the letters prepared.
I have the letters prepared, I don't look at, I re-date them. They've already put them, so, three weeks ago.
Right.
Yeah. I think the only concern I had was, I didn't know if there was a deadline. How long were you gonna auction those off?
It's on there, July fifth or thirty.
Okay, I don't have that letter, so I'm gonna have to.
Yes, you do.
You emailed me that? Oh, sorry? Okay, okay, maybe it was what I was here.
It's, it's, I can't remember what the date is. It's July fifth or something. We weren't even gonna have a meeting on the fifth of July.
Oh.
Oh. Well.
I can't remember.
I'm sorry if I sounded enthusiastic, but I must not have a meeting. That's exactly how I feel.
If it is, I can change it to the following day. And actually, that'll make me feel a little better on closing, cause normally I could close it the night before, about nine o'clock.
Absolutely, we can do it on.
But I can close it like at noon time that, that day, and that's when I say we're doing it. So, within a week, then I can close it at nine o'clock, that Monday night.
Just put a minimum bid of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it.
Yeah, I did that in the bucket.
I would like to, you get three thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll change.
No problem.
The only thing about this time, for time period, and they're probably working on one or two.
Alright, uh, jump in if I was cool, no pun intended.
Okay.
So, first of all, let's address the question of water testing.
I'll do it.
I was just gonna say, because that was.
I, I'd like to go down, I'd like to go down the list here, cause I've got some other things to.
Okay.
Okay.
She wants to run the agenda.
I know.
Water school, I'm sorry.
Water testing's on our list, and then we're gonna get an update from you on yours.
Yeah, okay, um, just to let you know, after twenty years, we had a fun day, for the first time after twenty years. Had about ninety-five kids, and the teachers, and so there's over a hundred, who is great, um, we had Mickey Mouse there, and he was really good.
Really young.
Okay, okay, I'm just telling what. Good Girl Scout. On the list here, water problems that we're having with the well, we're, are meeting with Kushi and John Barrett Wednesday. And we're working on those problems, we're having a lot of problems with the, the old stuff. Um, brag lane, we would like to have you guys figure out some way that we'll be able to use brag lane to get into the back of the virus.
Isn't that interesting?
Well, I didn't bring it up cause it was separate from that part.
Yeah, but it's not virus.
Okay.
Is that possible?
So, you want, so you want us to do it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a section, you know, right in front of the gate.
I understand.
Yeah.
I had always understood that you had to cross lawless stuff.
You do.
Now, okay.
But she's open to discussion.
How about a ninety-nine year lease?
Now, in a minute.
So, we should.
Let, let us talk for a minute. It's open for discussion, I haven't been invited to discuss with her, but through a third party, I have been informed that she's open to discussing a resolution. But I can't do anything until the board directs me to do it.
Okay.
So, if the board would be interested in having me meet with her, I would love to do it.
I will move that Tim be allowed to meet with.
A lot of purchases.
So, negotiation, negotiating it right away between the brag lane property and.
That's cool. Second.
Second.
Third. unanimous.
What else you got?
We're moving all the properties for the city, they're gonna sell.
We do, we know that.
Okay.
What else you got?
Okay, um, last and, and the biggest, when you're talking about water testing, uh, the swimming, we, we definitely know we have to have the water testing for insurance. My understanding that we just have to do it once with state, like, the way they have it set up, you know, the, where they come in.
I didn't read it that way, I read the insurance company as saying, it's a really, really good practice if you do water testing. Yeah, and I agreed to it.
I do, it would, it would be something that we do. I contacted, in fact, the lady over there doesn't know that I would be contacting her to see about kitty packing with Warren Lake. I would learn how to test, I would get my testing, do that, it'd save us some money.
Do the, uh, cold water folks do that type of water testing also?
Well, I'm gonna find out all the different. Yeah, and it'll be with Warren Lake, because then they take it over to the state lab within twenty-four hours.
That's fine, I'm just saying that another resource you may have available is the Cold River Local Advisory Board, so.
But, we feel that with the state, we can get that on within two weeks, and we could have that. If that's alright, we'll go ahead.
We'll find out.
Because of the knock dredge, we would not have the kitty park, which I know people are gonna be upset, but that's, would be down the road, depending on what things go. The docks, we have the docks.
Not down the road, but at a future date.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We have the docks, they happen to be our stage right now, so we had somebody donate wood that will build the stage, and we are now looking for the big barrels.
We don't, we don't have those.
So.
We don't, we, we wanna get those things through. What else you got?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, Ann, let's go, uh, there's a swimming pool.
Yes, that's right.
He's charging five bucks, something, six, around a hundred dollars, gee, you get that cleaned out.
I would say, get this thing cleaned down, so you get close the thing, so the kids won't go floating down.
Now, that sounds daring.
They are gonna float off the air in when they're swimming.
They can grab the roll.
It's gonna be gives way, it's gonna be, if it gives way.
It's not enough water in there.
There isn't?
A lot of money.
They do, they are gonna float off this certain section.
We're gonna block out a lot for us for years.
Well.
Alright, uh, water testing we're talking about, uh, I don't know if we have done, have we done anything to advance the engineering of this storage?
Yes. Yes, enough, I have finally got all the emails from Linda.
Yes, and now?
Yes, I have them, I'm gonna do them, I need to understand them, I need to send them off, I couldn't, I didn't, I don't have any information for you.
Okay, that's okay.
We have to get that done.
You have.
I have.
It's moved from point A to point B.
Yes, I have all the information, so I will figure it.
And you will continue to do that, alright. Fire station door, uh, a brief update on that, the, we did find out that it was indeed McMillan that did do the work on the door. Okay. Excellent, you would think they would still have a copy of all the years' work, they did.
They do.
No, no, so we're really back to square one on that whole thing.
Well, while we're talking about that, we've got the man doors and we've got the firewall to do. And we can do that, we, we put those projects together in order to get a better.
Correct.
Deals, I suppose you could say. But now that we're not going to be doing the door this year.
I thought we had done, I thought we had broken everything out individually.
Well, that, maybe that's what you're saying.
All these things, the big door, the little doors, this and that, they were all four different parts.
Yes.
So, we could still continue on with those.
With the man doors and the firewall, so that we can get Jesse in there and get him set up, he needs to have all kinds of.
I have no, no problem pursuing that, uh, assuming that money's in the budget, I'm just trying to remember where we put that.
If some government, there's.
I, I would move that we reduce the contract to just the doors and firewall, and see if we can get it done this year.
Uh, remove that from the R F P?
Well, remove the main, remove the twelve-foot door from the R F P and do everything else.
Page that, Chris.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't want to, yes, it's.
Well, I would, if the door comes back, we need a price on it, if we're gonna put a warrant out for it this year.
I don't see why we shouldn't.
To hire an engineer to at least give us an idea of what we need to do to put a door in that hole. So, that's what I would recommend, is at least get the engineering done on it, or get a price from an engineer, what it would cost them next year.
Exactly.
Write a warrant article.
So, maybe we need to.
We can pursue the easy part now, maybe like.
Correct, then we do a separate R F P for engineering on the door?
On the door, right, and that way we'll give you a number for, for next year's budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
That, that was pretty much. Imagine if we bought a shorter fire. Yeah. Or if we'd have bought a bigger fire station. Shorter.
Yeah, I'm giving the thinking building, maybe, maybe less than.
Well, those things would be insulated though.
So, are we doing a new R F P? What are we doing with the man doors and?
Well, that's.
Has that R F P gone out already?
No.
No, you mean the one that we did with specs? The only two that those went out to, the two, is Will, uh, Bill.
Austin.
Austin got one, and, uh, Bill, those were the only ones, until Bill's email came back, then I halted.
So, we're gonna rework that, we're gonna pull off the doors.
The main door should be pulled off.
And we're gonna put in engineering for a.
No.
No.
That's separate, they both are different contractors.
How about, how about I email you guys the R F P again?
No, it's, it's not that complicated. All you do is you take the main door off of the contract.
And it works.
And you've got a proposal for however many man doors, plus the firewall.
Agreed.
And you get that done, then in addition to that, you get an engineer involved in the design of the main door. We put them together because we thought there would be some sort of savings in cracking the down.
Because we already had all the good engineering done.
We thought we did.
We thought we did.
So, now, what I'm suggesting is that we just remove the door, the twelve-foot door from the proposal. Send the proposal out again with the man doors and the.
No arguing. But, yeah, I'm just very. Agree.
What's that?
Door, brag lane, where are we at with the cane?
Cane, ooh.
Well.
I hate to say that.
No. No, that's been quite an ordeal, but it has come up unbelievable. So, we, um, Charlotte has taken it home, that, cause she has a color printer to print that out.
Oh, for the, um, specific?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's done, it's framed, it's done.
Okay.
So, I have to, um, who is available, I have to call on the granddaughter to see if she will be in there Thursday, will Thursday work? Randy and you?
I think between the three of us, we will make it work, yeah, alright.
Okay.
Might have an excuse now too.
So, I was.
Do we all have to be there? No.
I will, um, call Mary Ellen and just double check as far as what time everyone gets there, you know, and, um, um, when you guys should be there. And Rocky did, definitely committed that he will definitely be there, so his name is gonna be on the bottom, that he has it scripted.
Good, that will just leave us alone.
Well.
That was fine, that's okay, yeah.
But, I mean, I think she probably appreciates it, the more the better.
Okay.
There, I mean, it's pretty, I mean.
Code, tie, cop hat, dog hat. I'll dust it out, probably.
So, yes, that was quite an ordeal, I couldn't find any company that would do it. If it was coffee-based, it was a, art and crafts.
Okay, good. Uh, did we miss anything? Uh, now we're ready to go into our line-by-line review of the fire.
Line-by-line review of.
We missed the, um, kitchen apple.
Thank you, yes, so, the kitchen, a friend of mine, uh, who's spent many, many years working for our Fortune Five Hundred company, he's always had this little sideline of doing barbecue and things like that. He got a call yesterday, basically informing him that he's too old and expensive to work for that company anymore, so we really need you to go and here's your severance package. Which accelerated his plans for developing a barbecue business. He needs a commercial kitchen to cook in, uh, so he can then take this to different events and things like that. We own a commercial kitchen that certified meets all the requirements that he.
If you've seen it?
Yes, he has seen it, and we had this conversation last year, last year, yeah. So, what he has offered is to pay all utilities for that building in exchange for sharing it with friendly meals. That to me gives that cost completely off of the town's plate, until we figure out what friendly meals is going to do going forward. So, that's where we're at, that's.
Have you consulted friendly meals? Have you consulted Friendly Meals?
Yes, uh, we had conversations with them and him, uh, last year also, they were all for it, uh, they thought any way that they could work together to share space and things like that, um, he understands the times that they are most busy, he also understands that occasionally the churches use that kitchen to cook turkey dinners and stuff like that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, uh, so it gets used for a few different things, so I think, uh, that's, that's my.
Insurance.
Uh, he is, he will be insured, he'll have business insurance.
He already does bar, he already does barbecues for the companies, or?
Companies, he's just bought another trailer, so he can drive around, set it up.
Does he need an exemplar?
I think we can work that into the lease, but I would say two pounds of pulled pork on lung, I'm not asking too much.
So, question, I think before, there's a figure, I think I need to do some figuring as far as what the expenses are, because I think they're very, I think they're pretty low.
They are.
That's what I'm saying.
It's pretty cheap.
Oh, I see what you're saying, we'd be better off to charge them a, a regular baseline fee than we would be to.
I know I did this for too much.
There are tangibles there, there's maintenance, uh, things like that, but.
Also have the problem of people feeling that this guy got a special deal and, uh, then, or their uncle or their cousin or something.
You bet, personally, I would like to see if we can open that up to more people, um, through some sort of.
Totally agree.
Time sharing type of thing, there is no commercial, community kitchen and keem closed down, that puts small businesses out of business, that's horrible.
How about if we give a six month contract and renegotiate after, yeah?
I'm fine with something like that, and I'm fine with recusing myself from this decision.
Well, I know him too, you were just talking about, I'm gonna recuse myself, too. I got to you, Rob.
No idea.
Fine with me.
I think we get barbecue.
Barbecue, then we could be the monthly.
Have a discussion, yeah. Yeah, so let's do that, let's.
Well, let's probably agree that we'll.
Have, uh.
Do you want him to make an offer of what he would like to contribute on a?
I tried to get something out of it today to just say, what are you thinking about? You have a good idea if we have to come here to a board meeting and actually discuss this at a board meeting.
We can do that.
You know what?
Find out what the expenses are.
But, yeah. Well, we know the expenses are gonna be lot, much less than what we could charge.
Right, we should at least have that number.
Well, we will.
Yeah, and I think we should have an idea of, uh, maybe we should talk to Friendly Meals a little bit more about what time is available, and maybe we can get an estimate.
Is that right now, on rate?
Or something like that.
Not trying to put a damper on, but you should pull this information together to make it fair, and nobody else can come back and say, well, this guy got a special deal or something.
Right, yes.
So we should find out what the going rate is throughout the kitchen.
And it would be good.
I can tell you one thing, it's more than you think it is.
I'm sure it is too.
Four or five hundred dollars.
I'm sure, yeah, but we should, we should have those numbers before we make a decision.
Yeah, I agree.
And you're gonna know per hour, how you're gonna charge, or per day?
Yeah, what usage.
Two hours, three, or five hours a week, or whatever.
And I think details on that, and we could have further discussion, but I like the idea of sort of an hourly rate that we could offer to others who have money for.
That makes it fair for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna have to have legal consultation. Did I roll my eyes for that?
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, you're gonna have inside some sort of an agreement.
Yeah.
And it's gonna have all these.
Here we go.
Figurations.
Yeah, I rolled my eyes so hard on that that I, I could read.
The, the fact that we haven't done our minutes yet.
So, page five, has it broken down, because I broke it down last year, as far as the propane, the electricity, and the oil, if you want to be budgeted, so if that can give you an idea.
Yeah, but we don't know how much we're going to stop. Friendly Meals, how much would it be?
We broke that, I did that all last year, I wrote everything down.
Yeah, but he's gonna add to that.
He is, but, but as far as the, um, you know, guideline, this is what we budgeted just for Friendly Meals.
And this is just for that goal?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
It's five.
Yeah, so, yeah, between propane and electricity and oil, you've got several thousand dollars.
Did we donate?
Yes, said that the town donates to Friendly. Alright, so I think we can agree that we'll all, all at least talk to, uh, Mary Lou or somebody at Friendly Meals to try to get a, a better idea of their schedule, like what hours will be available.
Has he talked to them?
Yes. Yeah, emailed with them a couple times last year, I was trying to push this because, hey, we could get us out.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's just that we have to do it fairly.
Nope, you're exactly right.
Legally, all of, fun things.
All this stuff, yeah. Alright. Is there a motion to approve our minutes, or do we have any changes?
I have, I have no. It's amazing how many they think we've taken down.
Omit it that we accept these, that's, I'll favor.